Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. This is a kind of a hybrid evening.
A hybrid evening.
A hybrid evening, yeah. We're going to -- this is our regular agenda night, but we're going to have an executive session. We're going to be involved in some discussions about many things. So, a lot going on. First of all, we're going to establish a forum with all members present. That's a forum and disposition of minutes. The regular session of City Council, November 5th, 2012. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
I have a motion to accept the regular minutes.
A second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are accepted. Communications. President doesn't have any? Mayor?
The only thing I'd like to bring up is that, let's see, it's two Fridays from now, 12:14, we're going to have our employee recognition luncheon at 11:30 at the community center. That's to let you know that, first of all, the office will be closed for that, and second of all, you're invited so you can at least smooze with and hang out with our employees and see what they've accomplished. So, you're all invited.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Service safety director?
I'm just watching out for Santa every Wednesday and Saturday and horse and buggy rides.
Our treasurer is here tonight.
I do have the interest income report. Do you want that now? Or?
Is it good or bad?
It's just a way in the middle.
We could go ahead and do that now.
Okay. Sorry. This is second and third quarter together. The interest income year-to-date is now $93,722,28. The projected's $123,590. We'll probably make just about that because I'll withdraw a couple of CDs at the end of the year. The interest rates are still not significantly improved, but we plan to take advantage of them as soon as they do. It's just pretty much holding steady, so.
They're still passing around.
Okay.
Anybody at this end have a question about this report?
And what's attached is just monthly bank reconciliations, just copies for your reference.
We are improving.
In terms of total overall fundability, yes.
That's always good. Any other questions or comments? The treasurer, do you want to make any further comments?
If there's any questions.
We have the treasurer's report. We gladly accept it, and if anybody has questions later, please let us know and talk to Mary Ann McCallum. Okay? Lardirec line?
I've got no report tonight, Mr. President.
And so, we're going to move into executive session to talk about some collective bargaining issues. To make it easier, we're going to move council and elected officials down to council chambers rather than ask all of our audience to get up and wait out in the cold. We anticipate this won't be a long session, but we do need to do it. And so, could I have a motion to move into executive session?
I have a motion that we move into executive session with all council members, Pat Lang, the administration of Paul and Paula, and
HR. Personnel director.
Personnel director.
Mary Ann. And our treasurer.
And our treasurer.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to move into executive session. We have to, we take votes individually.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will be gone for a few minutes. Enjoy yourselves. Thank you for waiting. Council is back from our discussion of some collective bargaining issues which will soon appear on our agenda. Do we have an amendment?
I would make a motion to amend the agenda tonight to include the bargaining.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. We are to include issues that we discussed in the executive session about collective bargaining with our employees in the code office. All those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. So, the agenda is amended. We now have ordinance, what is that? What does that mean? 134 has been added to our agenda. So, now we're going on with ordinances for second reading. Usually ordinances for second reading are just it, they're read and note, no action is taken. However, the council members who introduced this ordinance may have some comments or wishes that it move ahead. So, we're going to go ahead with ordinance 11812. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 11.04, Bending, Peddling, and Soliciting and Declaring an Emergency, introduced by Councilmember Ordinance 12012. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $300,000 worth of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring a new fire truck and related equipment and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Nysel.
Did we think this one needed to be suspended?
I'm trying to remember which one we have to amend for the interest rate. Was that part of one of these?
That one doesn't need an amendment. The appropriation ordinance is amended. These notes are due on December 13th, so if you think it wise for us to settle tonight, I suppose we could.
December 13th?
December 13th. Right. We're having a special session.
Yeah, we have one on 10th. So, I guess we can hold off now.
Okay, we'll go ahead. Ordinance 12112. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $800,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the costs of improvements to this municipality's wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 12212. An ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency.
And, yeah, Mr. President, I would make a motion that we consider an amendment for ordinance 12212.
Second?
And the purpose of this amendment is to clarify the language and the compensation and step increases, and I'm distributing text for council members to see. And our human resources director, Claudia Reagan, is here to help us with that.
Under Section 21 Compensation, you'll see some amendments to it stating crossing off letter E, which is declaring that employees within certain ranges would receive a step increase. Later in today's meeting, you will see that we have changed the way the employees will be receiving pay increases, no longer having steps, so that language no longer needs to be incorporated. And it also just clarifies, takes away that permanent part-time employees will not receive step increases every other year, but will just receive increases with the regular full-time And that's it. That's the only amendment in there.
Okay. Anybody have questions about this amendment? All those in favor of the amendments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the ordinance has been amended and will be read for the first time next week. This is read for the first time. I'm sorry. You read for the second time. And now we go with ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 12412. An ordinance amending ordinance 0807 and the Athens City Code Establishing Salaries for Athens City Council, introduced by Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had discussion in our Finance and Personnel Committee meeting last week, and a range was discussed. And you might remember that this will be effective, not this coming year, but it will commence on January 1, 2014. And what we're recommending is a 1% pay increase for council members, which will give council members between the range of $75 additional money, $75 to $90 additional money per year. Current pay range is about $7,500. So, that's the first reading for this.
No comments? No comments? Ordinance 12512. An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2012. Again, Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have been receiving consistent information, and I think very helpful information, from city administration and from our auditor's office about our budget process this year. And this begins the first reading of three. We'll, on the next three Monday nights, including a special session next Monday night, we'll have the full three readings of the budget. And I'd like to turn to Mayor Wile for some additional information on this.
Okay, this again is 02512, a nice even number as we like it. I got the results from most of the department heads in terms of what they want to see. The general budget, if you look down at the bottom, is $12.7 million, 12.745. This is to reflect what we had last year at the same time. 02511 was 11.97, so you can see we've gone up a little bit less than $1 million. If you remember, the report from Kathy Heck, the city auditor, November 5th, is that we're, our certified resources for 2011 was 14.8 for the general fund. In contrast, just so you know, our revised appropriation, these appropriations that we've done over the past year, again, every appropriation moves that budget back and forth, shows a 12.751, 12 million point 751 for the general fund at this time. I'm looking at the year-to-date reports from mid-November on that. We haven't really moved that much around in terms of appropriations since then. The total budget, if you go to the back end, of course, is $33.7 million. Again, the breakdown, if you look at it, has to do, of course, with the personnel. And the general fund is under 80%, 77.5%. The total budget, of course, is about 47%, but that's because you have some high-end activities going on, in particular, Small Cities Grant, which will be doing the Oxford Bridge. We put that in because we started that up last year, and this is just rolling through the project. I added a few things in terms of getting a police cruiser. There's been a wish list on a police officer. Some of the other things I haven't put in there are some of the other budget items in terms of the Issue One grant money for Columbus Road, which we plan to do. I'm trying to think what else I could cover at this point. I had stuck in the budget, of course, another household has this waste pickup, it's every other year, so that would come out of the sanitation 760 budget. It's only about $15,000, so it's a really small change compared to what you're going to see in the total budget, which is, let's see, sanitation is running about $1.2, $1.3 million. Let's see, other activities, again, we did discuss, if you remember, putting some money into the Transportation Assistance Fund, the 214, which, of course, is going to be our contribution to the public transit system, as well as some of the pass-through for fareboxes. And what's the other one? Administration fareboxes and something else. Okay.
Passes?
Yeah, passes, yes. Other than that, let's see, other changes where, that's all I really could need to cover right now unless you have other questions. Again, it's, we're all within our reserves right now. The meeting with the RDE auditor today, again, he's citing about $2 million carryover or in the black, which is good. And again, that's his guesstimate at this point, but that looked appropriate for me. Any questions? Yes.
I'd like to point out that the carryover that we have is from the city doing a really great job of budgeting, and it's not because the state has increased government, you know, services or any of the things that's coming from the state. So, though the state keeps kind of cutting us back, I think the city is doing a really responsible job, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And again, we really pushed hard on that with my staff and administration. It's a shame because in one sense, we kept squeezing them, squeezing them, so we're right now trying to look and say, okay, have we actually fallen behind in some of the things which we should be replacing over time? And therefore, I had, I put about $100,000 into recreation because I know they need a, I've seen the picture of the truck. It's in bad shape. It looks like it's green, and it might be mole on it, I don't know what, or algae. We will, of course, have other issues. We're still going to be starting up the wastewater treatment plant, of course, so that's going to be in the mix as well, but that's further down the line.
So, it's no thanks to the state. My essence.
Okay, no thanks to state.
No thanks to the state, in spite of the state that we have been, you know, you've been extraordinarily creative and responsible about doing the budgeting, and we really appreciate it, and the citizens should appreciate it, and they should complain to the state because they're only going to cut back more.
Call again.
Sir? Be quiet now.
Okay. Any other questions? That's because it's project-related. Okay. Yeah, the service safety director points out that if you notice the wheel tax, 226, 225, what was the third one there?
Street rehab.
Street rehab. Yeah, many of those are zeroed out because we'll, when we do the authorization for the projects, we'll do the appropriations at the same time. We're coming to that conclusion that maybe that methodology's better so we remember what we're doing because we could appropriate the money later and then, or not, and then all of a sudden have to go into design and engineering and authorization for the project. And the idea is to put them all in at the same time as a project number, so we have numbers associated, project numbers associated with appropriations and authorization. It's a different mode. We'll see how well it works. I think it'll work better, otherwise I wouldn't be trying it, but.
It sounds like a better way of tracking things by project and keeping, and for all of us to keep track of it, so that's appreciated.
Yeah, keep some money out of the pot till we need it.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on. Ordinance 12612. An ordinance authorizing staffing levels, a non-union pay scale and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2013, and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. Finance and Personnel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We did mention this last week in our Finance Committee meeting about non-union pay, or pay increases for non-union staff. And the, what we're recommending is a 3.5% pay increase. Two-thirds of this would be coming from the general fund and would cost, I think, a total for all of the employees slightly more than $100,000 a year. But seems to be a very reasonable amount, and the non-union employees have not had a significant raise for several years. And this is in keeping with some of the other negotiated pay increases that we've had with some of the other groups. And any questions? Our HR director is here also.
Again, moving on along. Ordinance 12712. An ordinance amending ordinance 012405, reallocating revenues from the city income tax and declaring an emergency. Finance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Let me have, turn to that one. We also talked about this at the, our Finance Committee meeting last week, and what we're doing is, as you can see in the text of this particular bill, the city income tax that comes in, there is a split of 85% of that. And of that, it had been, 74% went to the general fund. We're now recommending a shift in that, that 73% of that would go to the general fund. And that 1% that comes off the general fund then would go down to a Transportation Assistance Fund, Fund Number 214, and it would designate a steady stream, a consistent stream of money for our transportation expenses that we have within the city. More accurately reflects, I think, the commitment that the city has made towards transportation expenses. This way, we won't be having to appropriate all the time for special needs during the course of the year.
And can you tell us approximately what that 1% would be?
The deputy auditor stated that's between $80,000 to $90,000. I think he said, he said about 95, somewhere around there, but it will vary depending on the income tax. And this, of course, is after the first proprietary stuff. When I say proprietary, the stuff that was voted on in terms of the community center and recreation, I think, what's the other one, the streets? These are ones that were voted by ballot to go into that pot of money, and therefore, that's the first stuff that comes out. If you look at it, see, 6.6% for streets deducted out of it, the street rehabilitation, community center, 6.6%, and then a 303 for the recreation, community center operations. That comes out first. If you remember, the discussion was that's about a little bit under 15%, I guess, is that what we're hearing? And then the rest of it gets divvied up into these percentages, general fund, streets, recreation, capital. And now we're moving 1% into transportation. Again, it's coming out of the, it's coming out of the general fund and going into transportation. Yes?
So, just to clarify, I believe I understand this, we're not spending, actually spending more on transportation, we're simply setting the money aside as it comes in through the tax revenue?
Yes.
As opposed to how we do it now, which is just take it out of the general fund?
Usually we do it ad hoc, yes, as needed. Because it's now pass-through, we usually had some money coming in to us, so we always had some cash flow. Well, the stuff we have now will be cash flow too. We're talking about maybe on the side, if you look at the amount that's put in the appropriation, the 125 is about $200,000. Of that, about 40 of it is coming out of the farebox. Some of it comes out of, again, there's another factor in there, and I can't remember what it is. And some of it will be our contribution. I just signed off on an invoice for about $28,000, which is an in-kind match as well. That's for the rental of the bus garage and certain facilities. So, we always have to have some cash rolling through here. The question, of course, is how much, and this will provide us with our contribution. We may need more, but I'm hoping this 1% will do what we need, because it's a stream. In the past, I backtracked, and I think I gave to the Finance Personnel Committee the mixes that have occurred before. Somewhere about 20 years ago, there was actually a, really about $38,000 set aside for transportation at that point, and that went on for several years. It was a set amount. That's when the general fund was running about 64%. And the breakdown was interesting because you had, you know, general fund, and you worked your way down, and then just everything left got dumped into another pool. It was a different way of doing things, but again, that was a fixed amount up to a certain point. We're much higher than that, and I could get you that if you really need it.
That's fine.
I have one clarification, if it's possible to go back to 12612, because I know the HR director has put a lot of work into. A lot of detailed papers that you all have, and I went, oh, that was with the last ordinance. And so, what I wanted to draw council members' attention to, you don't have to read it in depth tonight because we do have additional readings, but what she's done is, and we've seen this from year to year, there are title clarifications and cleanup in the staffing listing. So, if you do, you can look through it, review it if you have any questions, but as I understand it, I think that's the main thing, and then also some clarification on positions no longer used, like our seasonal workers, and then also then some work on pay ranges rather than steps. So, I'd like to draw on her expertise while we have Claudia here tonight, so I apologize if I skipped over that.
No, that's fine. Yes, most of it is updating and clarification of things that have been in place for some time that just never were addressed in the ordinance. Another change is the pay range that you'll see on this page. We are eliminating the step increases mostly for the reason it was really hard to keep track of who got a step increase when, looking past, in the past pay ordinances from back to 2007, it seemed that a lot of these step ranges were receiving not only step increases but the percentage as declared by council, which we had ranges 1 through 5 moving very quickly through the range, and then the management supervisory roles that were 6 through 9 were not moving as evenly because those ranges weren't being updated as living expenses, you know, were being analyzed for everybody. So, the mayor had asked me to reach out to other cities similar to Athens. I did that. I reached out to Oxford, Kent, and Bowling Green, and this scale is something similar that Oxford uses and has been very beneficial. They've had it in place for a long time. So, it clarifies the ranges and evenly spaces them out based on job responsibilities, not on who's within the position, more or less. And then you'll also see that the pay scale here just clarifies who's in what department and I think just makes it much simpler to read and know who's where. So, that's pretty much the big changes. So, it'll be quite different if you look to the 2012 ordinance that we did last year in December, but I think it's just, I think it's simpler, and I think this is exactly what the city, the city for the non-union employees need, so. Any questions on that?
I just make a comment, Claudia. I didn't see 2012, and I caught on to this pretty quickly.
Oh, good.
It's really helpful and certainly expresses, I think, what you just said pretty well.
Great. Good to hear. Thank you. Yes.
Since we do have you here, could you tell us about the changes in, I guess it's the internal services?
That's okay. Anything specific or?
It might be a typo, but I see Chief Information Officer half-time and then also full-time, and then I think there's a new, oh, okay. An increase from half to.
Right. Yeah, it probably is just a typo. The internal service, Chief Information Officer, used to be half-council, half under the mayor's office. The Chief Information Officer is going to be moved permanently onto the mayor's staff, so directly answering to the service safety director, so that's why that is. But yes, that should be eliminated, so thank you, good catch. And then the IT technician, we've been given some advice that it potentially could be a full-time position. a full-time position, so we're allocating that if we want to make that decision, it's available, but as of right now, it will remain at a half-time position, so.
And that position itself is relatively new also.
Yes, it's existed, but it's only been a permanent part-time as far as staffing levels for a year now.
Yeah.
But it is relatively new, yes.
We have a consultant looking at our IT designs and needs right now. The hope is, one of the first recommendations he had is that you probably do need two full-time people. That's not official, because he still has yet to interview all the stakeholders and everything like that, but just looking at the quantity of, you know, computers and peripherals and everything else, he's saying, you know, this is, we have a pretty big operation here. And again, he's just in a preliminary, right, so.
Right, but I think he will be needing, at least with council, or who you designate will be for that.
If you haven't made an appointment ready, I assume somebody has.
No, they aren't included, he started with the other department.
Okay. And again, really, let's just look at our overall system, how we set up, whether we have efficiencies, whether we're going in the right direction, whether we need to, you know, realize there's actually, you know, we have everything lumped in Internal Services right now. The question is, do we want to parse it out to Internal Services, which includes, essentially that covers everything from, you know, cars to computers. Do we want to have that split off? And these are things, dialogues I have with other mayors. Unfortunately, being the biggest city around here, they don't usually get that, you know, the dialogue does not occur in southeast Ohio, it usually goes somewhere else, and I'm talking to somebody much of a larger city, and therefore, it's apples and oranges as well, so, but that's why we have somebody looking at what we have, just so we can get a little bit of better fix on how things are working, how we have use of our employees, as well as use of our equipment and resources.
Sounds like a good thing, thanks.
Trying. Other questions for Claudia?
Thank you, Kristin.
I want to thank you for all the work. She worked with Ray Haslett, the deputy auditor as well, quite a bit, to work out the inconsistencies and things that need to be dealt with, so it's good collaboration.
Okay, thank you for the questions. Ordinance 12812, an ordinance amending Ordinance 03408, establishing the allocation of sewer service charges to the sewer debt fund, 758, and declaring an emergency. Finance and Personnel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance follows up on the recommendation in the annual report made by Auditor Kathy Hecht that noted that we currently have a 28 percent and 72 percent split between the monthly sewer service charges. So 28 currently goes to the sewer fund, and 72 percent goes to the sewer, excuse me, 72 percent's for the operating budget. And what we found is, is that it needs to be, a little bit more money is needed in the operating for the sewer fund, that would give it a little more cushion. I think we only had about $3,600 left in the last version of the unappropriated balances in the sewer fund. So what this will do is give a few more $1,000 to the operating funds per year.
Taking it from the debt fund.
Correct, so shifting it from the debt fund over to the operations.
And again, this is a recommendation of the auditor from her report, that usually we're piling it up more in the debt fund than necessary.
Ordinance 125, 12912, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance takes care of two of our expenses towards the end of the year, and one of them is an appropriation that we need for an additional $800 for the general fund, and this represents the interest that we will be paying on, on the fire truck purchase and the amount that's due on the note that we borrowed to pay for that fire truck. The second one is for $12,885, and we discussed this in Finance Committee last week. The Code Office has made a request for a transfer of some funds unused in some accounts and could transfer it over to, for a new filing system for the Code Office.
I'd say suspended, yeah.
Yes, request, considering it's under suspension of the rules.
Yes.
We have a motion, and a second, to suspend the rules on Ordinance 12912. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of Ordinance 12912.
Second.
And as described earlier, the $800 for the general fund for the fire truck note, increasing that appropriation, and then also transferring $12,885 for a Code Office filing system.
Okay, so we have now a motion to pass ordinance, to accept Ordinance 12912. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign, opposed? The ordinance is accepted. Ordinance 13012, an ordinance levying special assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the Grosvenor Street Project, Number 238, and declaring an emergency. Remember nicely?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the final in a series of ordinances that we have for sidewalk assessments or improvements to sidewalks, and the work has been completed. This particular project for Grosvenor Street encompassed $34,609 worth of repairs to the sidewalks, and we're now ready to move this forward now that the work's been completed.
And Ordinance 13112, an ordinance levying special assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the North Court area infrastructure project, Number 259, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the same with this. This was another area of improvements that we made this summer, and this is the North Court Street area, and as we were doing other infrastructure improvements to water and storm sewers, we also did the improvements to the sidewalks. And the amount of the improvements that will be assessed now that the work's been completed is $46,068.
Just clarification, residents, citizens who own that sidewalk will be assessed for the repair, and we will have a special board that will be set up, that they can come and ask for relief from that debt.
I think that was already done.
Thank you, citizens, for how so many of you realized the importance of maintaining good sidewalks. Ordinance 13212, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a housing revolving loan fund, a housing revolving loan fund administration agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Development and declaring an emergency. I'm sorry, remember nicely?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a renewal of an agreement, well, this authorizes the mayor to execute the housing revolving loan fund administration agreement, and this is part of our CHIP program for housing improvements made within the Athens community.
Ordinance 13312, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an administrative services contract with Hawking Athens Ferry Community Action, HAPCAP, to administer the housing revolving loan fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this particular kind of corollary ordinance, if you might call it, gives then the mayor the authority to make sure that we have the administrative agreement with the State of Ohio for these funds for the housing loan fund.
This is with HAPCAP. The first one was with the state, this one's with HAPCAP, but they're both, as you say, they're related. One's administration, one is actual CHIP grant. We talked about this last time a little bit. It's an ongoing program for housing improvements for low and moderate income.
And a while ago this evening, we added an ordinance to our agenda, Ordinance 13412, an ordinance authorizing the adoption of a three-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 24032, and Ohio Council 8, AFL-CIO, concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have received information, and thank the persons who were involved in the negotiations. This is a renewal of a, or was a negotiation for a three-year contract. It will be effective back to October 7, 2012, and will be effective through October 3, 2015. And these are for our five employees in the Code Office, and of the three years, there were 2 percent raises negotiated for each of the three years, pay increases for that. The other changes that happened to the contract, which we reviewed in executive session, is that the FMLA language has been clarified, and then also the injury leave language within the contract has been clarified. And so moving this forward for approval.
I'm just looking at Personnel Director, Service Safety, anything to say at this point?
Do we need emergency clauses?
Well, we are going to ask the auditor's office how much time they need in terms of, because this is retroactive, and President Sands, you participated, it was kind of, took a while to get where we are, but we're comfortable with where we are in terms of reaching the agreement, so we go forward for the next three years.
And thank you all for doing it, President, and you, too, who worked hard on it.
Okay, announcements and other business. We are having a special session next Monday, where we will read all of these ordinances we introduced tonight, pass the ones that were at second reading, and possibly accept some ordinances that need suspension. Do we have committees that need to meet?
No. Planning and development, please.
Planning and development? Anybody else?
I think we can do this under your committee, but we'll have to look at the AEP right-of-way contracts. So that's fine, just to add that to yours.
Okay. So we'll have planning and development. Anybody else?
I'm not aware of any needs at the moment, but I will check in with the Public Works Director as well.
If the need comes up, please let the clerk of council know so we can add that. We will be meeting at 7 o'clock. I think that we will take care of the special session first, and then have committee meetings.
Sounds good.
Okay, now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda. If people would like to speak to us tonight? No, then we are adjourned.